In Crest Hill City Council Meeting to Order, if everyone would please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag. I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence in addition to a opening prayer after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During the month of May, we, in addition to honoring our veterans, we also honor the month of May our police officers. And unfortunately, in our 57-year history in the city of Crest Hill, two Crest Hill police officers were killed in the line of duty. So we'd like to take a moment of silence for them tonight. I have a, actually, I have four on the list, so please bear with me. First one is for Officer James Nink. He was killed in the line of duty while in pursuit of an armed robbery vehicle, was involved in a traffic crash, and paid the ultimate price to the city of Crest Hill with the loss of his life. And that was on September 16th, 1967. We also lost Sergeant Tim Simonson on September 28th, 1994, who during an investigation of an armed robbery was also shot and killed in the line of duty. Gave the ultimate price to the city of Crest Hill. Most recently, on April 20th, 2017, Officer Jeff Casford passed away. Officer Jeff Casford began his career in 1978 to 1984 with the Spring Valley Police Department. He served there for eight years. He then came in 1984 to the city of Crest Hill, where he became a patrolman in 1984, gave 30 years of service to the city of Crest Hill, retired in 2014, passed away on April 20th, 2017. So to his wife Betty and his three sons, we certainly want to offer our condolences to them also. And most recently, I'm sure that most of you either read or seen in the Joliet Herald News, the veteran Michael Galatic was from the city of Crest Hill. He is well-connected to the Sternesha family, who is a well-respected family in the city of Crest Hill. He was killed on December 7th, 1941, on the US Oklahoma during the attack on Pearl Harbor by the Japanese. His remains, his remains were uncovered and buried in a, in a mass grave for those that they could not identify. But through the technology over the years, the DNA, they were able to identify parts of his body. He was then flown back to the United States, to the O'Hare Airport, and there was a funeral mass with a full Veterans Honor to him at the Abraham Lincoln Cemetery last Saturday. So to his family, and for the courage of all those people, the Sternesha family, and to all the courage of those people with their scientific research were able to identify his body after 75 years, was certainly a miracle. So again, I would ask that we all take a moment of silence for the family of Jim Nink, the family of Tim Simonson, the family of Jeff Casford, and the family of Michael Galatic. Now I would ask Father Bill Dwan, who is vicar of priests for the Diocese of Joliet, a personal friend of mine and my wife for the past several years. He gave me a private blessing in my office. I would ask that he gives a public blessing here to the entire city of Crest Hill, to this city council and a new city council that will be taking place here in about 35 minutes. Father?
Good evening, everybody. As also, just so you know, I spend most of my days, Monday through Friday, here in Crest Hill, at the Blanchett Center, so feel very much a part of this community. So pray with me. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you. On behalf of all who are gathered here today, thank you for the many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our calling, for sustenance, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to respect governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. On this night in particular, we pray for the outgoing council members. We pray in Thanksgiving for their service, the service that they've given generously to the people of Crest Hill. We pray tonight also for our mayor, for various levels of city officials, in particular for the new elected members of this council. We are asking that you graciously grant to them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people here in Crest Hill, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in doing what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there's dishonest or honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. We pray tonight for the agenda set before them, give them an abundance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our city of Crest Hill. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Thanks, Father. There's a couple seats up front here if anybody needs to come up front. Okay, before you, you have the minutes of the April 17th, 2017 Crest Hill City Council Meeting. Motion would be in order.
So moved as presented.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll.
It's all right. Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verche.
Here.
Barbara Schaller.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Candy Thuringer.
Present.
Charlie Convery.
Here.
Tom Inman.
Here.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the April 17th, 2017 meeting. A motion would be in order.
So moved as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Thuringer, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal. Questions or comments of the motion? Roll call, please.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Charlie Convery.
Yes.
Candy Thuringer.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, welcome to all of our guests that are in the audience this evening. This is a special night for the city of Crest Hill, so we will try to move this as long as fast as possible, but we certainly want to give everybody their time and respect at the podium. So with that, we will move on to our agenda items, and we have with us this evening our city administrator, Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no agenda items for approval this evening. The report is in your packet, and for the count, for the public's information, we do have a work session scheduled for May 8th. Current topics include the salary adjustments for non-union personnel, sidewalk program, as well as the phosphorus implementation program, and I would be happy to answer any questions this evening.
Any questions of Heather? Thanks, Heather. We purposely have a light agenda this evening, but we still have to take care of some city business. Moving on to our Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Mr. Tony Terez. Good evening, Tony.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I have no formal request for council this evening at, on the agenda. I do have a informational newsletter, our quarterly newsletter for your review. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any. And also, just to bring everyone up to date, I know we've had a very rainy spring, and it continues. This weekend was no exception. We had three and a half inches of rain between Saturday and Sunday, and we had multiple crews out just doing windshield assessments and answering some street flooding. Other than that, we continue tackling any issues that come up. That's all I have.
Yeah, and I know the crews were out. They were out on Saturday night, they were out on Sunday, and, you know, sometimes the fierceness of Mother Nature, there's not a lot that we can do. We've alleviated a lot of the flooding throughout the city over the past eight years, but we certainly have not solved it. We have, we have a little ways to go yet, and we will continually try to work on that and try to find a solution to those that are affected. It seems to be isolated in certain areas, and we are aware of those areas, and we will explore all our options and do what is fiscally responsible for this city going forward in regards to that. Anybody else, comments or questions of Tony?
No, just great report, Tony. Sorry.
Scott?
Just wanted to comment on how nice the Oakland Avenue Water Tower is looking.
Thank you.
It's really nice. I don't know if anyone else has noticed, but...
Yeah, and I will tell you that myself, Heather, Scott, and Mark Seifert, we met with Joe Sullivan from the, the individual and the contract that we have in regards to the water towers, and there is going to be a second coat of paint on the top half of the bowl. If you notice, it's a little streaky up there. We noticed that right away. There may have been a little malfunction with the, the paint in that area. It could have had something to do with the weather conditions, but they have offered to put a second coat on the top half of the bowl, all the way around, to make it even out, and hopefully will match the bottom of the bowl. It's more noticeable when the sun is out and shining on it than when it is not, but I thought that was a gracious offer that the company made for that. Heather, if you'd like to add anything to that?
No, they were, they were very willing to work with us. As soon as we noticed it, they came right out and said they would fix the issue. They noticed it too, so there was no dispute over it, and they're going to be out as soon as they can in the next couple of weeks to address it.
Soon as the weather gets better, if we don't have any rain. Anybody else for Tony? Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Moving on to Community Development Department, our Economic Development Director, Scott McMaster. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no agenda items this evening, but I would like to note that May 10th Plan Commission will address a couple of agenda items, including the final platypus division for Lot 118 Renaissance Crossing for Joppa Properties, the reorganization of the Plan Commission, and it's actually not on the agenda, but the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions and Easements for the Pearred Villas of Renaissance Crossing for Joppa Properties. And with that, I'll address any questions or concerns.
Very good. And Joppa Property is the one on Division Street, right next to the Zaza Homes.
Correct.
Questions or comments of Scott? Thanks, Scott. Moving on to our Police Department, our Police Chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have anything on the agenda this evening. Just want to remind everybody, on May 19th, we're having cop on the rooftop at Dunkin' Donuts on Pinefield Road from 5:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There's going to be police officers on the roof. We're going to be collecting donations for Special Olympics, so if you can stop by and donate to a great cause. Other than that, I do not have anything. Reports are in the packet.
Hopefully it won't be rainy for you.
Let's hope not.
Any questions of our Police Chief? Thanks, Ed. Moving on to the Mayor's Report, we have two resolutions for the outgoing officials, but if Council wouldn't mind, I would like to hold on to these until we enter new business and transition from the old into the new. So with that, I have nothing else on the agenda. If there's any questions of the Mayor, we'll certainly try to entertain them. You do have a copy of my report in your packet. Not hearing any questions, we'll move on to our City Clerk's Report. Our City Clerk, Vicki Hackney. Good evening, Vic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have before you the first requests for a block party from Patricia Sirda, I'm sorry, Sirda of 1924 North Rayner. She's requesting permission to have a block party on June 10th from noon until 10:00 PM. She would like Elsie barricaded from the intersection of Elsie and Rayner to the intersection of Elsie and Kelly.
So moved. Second. We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche. Questions or comments in regards to the block party request on June 10th? Roll call, please.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Charlie Convery.
Yes.
Candy Thuringer.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
The second item I have is there's a block party request from Cub Scout PAC 83, permission for closure of Rayner Avenue from the intersection of Elsie to the intersection of Bryan Drive from 2:00 until 5:00 PM on Sunday, May 21st.
So moved. Second. Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche for the block party on May 21st. Questions or comments? I know we have a representative. Would you like to say anything, ma'am?
Um, just thank you to the city.
Please come to the podium, please. State your name for the record, please.
Sure.
Maybe get a little background, since this is a first, I believe?
For me.
Okay.
Um, for many years, I've been with, hi, I'm Nicole Koval, with Cub Scout PAC 83. I'm the committee chairperson for the Cub Scout PAC. We are, meet at St. John Lutheran Church by the mall. We serve children from Richland Elementary School, as well as Chaney, Monge, and Crest Hill. So many of our parents are very familiar with Crest Hill, and for many years since I've been involved in the PAC for nine, 10 years, we have had a block party on Arda, and so thank you to the city for allowing us to close off the streets for the purpose of a soapbox derby. The boys get to build their car, they get to roll out a hill. Crest Hill is awesomely filled with hills, and so we changed the location this year to not inconvenience so many residents, so it's an area that's not full of homes. It's business properties that are closed on Sunday, so we're not going to inconvenience so many families, you know, on a Sunday. So thank you so much for your support for the Cub Scout PAC. It's a really fun event, and the boys look forward to it whenever we do it, so...
Any questions before the roll call? Roll call, please.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Charlie Convery.
Yes.
Candy Thuringer.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
And Scott Dyke.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And copies will be given to Building Department for the barricades. Thank you very much. The other item I do have as announcement is the city of Crest Hill Spring Citywide Garage Sale is May 18th, 19th, 20th, and 21st. The permit fee is $5. The last day to register is May 16th. Maps and lists will be available on our office on May 17th. We will hopefully have no rain during those days, so, but usually have pretty good turnout, so if anyone would like to do that. I do have one personal thing just to say, and this is directed to your police department. A couple weeks ago, I was involved in an auto accident. Crest Hill Police responded along with the Lockport Township Fire Department. I have to say, the speed that they arrived was probably faster than I could dial 911 again, but the professionalism, Lockport Township Fire Department was wonderful, so I thank you, if you could pass it on to the officers who arrived.
Will do.
And also to the Lockport Township Fire Department, thank you very much. I really appreciate it, so...
Thank you.
And that's all I have this evening.
Well, Vicki, we're just glad you're okay.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments of the City Clerk? Thanks, Vicki.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on to Treasurer's Report, our Treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to report our regular and overtime payroll from 4/13/17 through 4/16/17 in the amount of $202, excuse me, let's start that over, $202,298.03. We also have another payroll report for 4/13/2017 in the amount of $7,923.60. The only item I seek approval on tonight is our list of bills which totals $268,919.56.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Schaller, seconded by Alderwoman Oberlin in regards to the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Candy Thuringer.
Yes.
Charlie Convery.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And copies will be given to Building Department for the barricades. Thank you very much. The other item I do have as announcement is the city of Crest Hill Spring Citywide Garage Sale is May 18th, 19th, 20th, and 21st. The permit fee is $5. The last day to register is May 16th. Maps and lists will be available on our office on May 17th. We will hopefully have no rain during those days, so, but usually have pretty good turnout, so if anyone would like to do that. I do have one personal thing just to say, and this is directed to your police department. A couple weeks ago, I was involved in an auto accident. Crest Hill Police responded along with the Lockport Township Fire Department. I have to say, the speed that they arrived was probably faster than I could dial 911 again, but the professionalism, Lockport Township Fire Department was wonderful, so I thank you, if you could pass it on to the officers who arrived.
Will do.
And also to the Lockport Township Fire Department, thank you very much. I really appreciate it, so...
Thank you.
And that's all I have this evening.
Well, Vicki, we're just glad you're okay.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments of the City Clerk? Thanks, Vicki.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on to Treasurer's Report, our Treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to report our regular and overtime payroll from 4/13/17 through 4/16/17 in the amount of $202, excuse me, let's start that over, $202,298.03. We also have another payroll report for 4/13/2017 in the amount of $7,923.60. The only item I seek approval on tonight is our list of bills which totals $268,919.56.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Schaller, seconded by Alderwoman Oberlin in regards to the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Candy Thuringer.
Yes.
Charlie Convery.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, all. Any questions of our City Treasurer? Okay, thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Moving on, unfinished business. Anybody? We have nothing on the agenda? Okay, moving on to new business, this is the swearing-in of the newly-elected officials and the goodbyes to the outgoing officials. We got here a little bit quicker than I had imagined, but we purposely kept a lot of the agenda items off of this, this meeting. We went back four years ago and took a look at it, and we had way too much agenda items on, on the, on the agenda back then, so next, next city council meeting in two weeks, we'll probably have a full agenda with a lot of activity. So we will now move on to the saying of the goodbyes to the, to Alderwoman Thuringer and Alderman Convery, and I will just make some opening comments here, and then we'll let city council make some comments after the officials receive their gifts. You know, this is always a difficult time when you have to say goodbye after an election to, to of the city officials. And I've been sitting up here for 24 years now, and, you know, you form many relationships over those years, and there's a lot of good memories that I will certainly take with me. I've known Candy sitting here for the last four years, but I knew her long before that, well, probably well over 30 years. So we go back a long ways, and there are a lot of good memories there. Charlie has been sitting here for the last 12 years as Alderman in Ward 4, and, you know, I have known him probably for about the last 15 years now. So, you know, we form relationships, and that's what makes it so difficult to say goodbye, because those relationships go deep and far. And, you know, but they're, they're starting another journey in their life now, and I certainly want to wish both of them good health. I want to wish them good luck in all their future endeavors, no matter what they choose to do. I will tell you that both of you, Candy and Charlie, you have built many relationships here at City Hall, and as long as I'm the mayor, you are always welcome back in this building. You are always welcome to come back and visit and to foster those relationships that you have made over all these years. It has been our tradition and our privilege and honor that the outgoing officials for the past 24 years, we have honored them with resolutions, and we have honored them with plaques. And we will continue to do that tonight, to keep our tradition solid and to keep our tradition going forward for many more years to come. I will, I will say this, that over, over the years that we've sat at this table to both of them, we have not always agreed, and that is not a bad thing. I would, I would term that, that that is good government, and I would say that as long as we can respectfully disagree at this table and do what is in the best interest of the city of Crest Hill, and then move on to the next issue and not hold a grudge, we will progress. And in my mind, that is better government. So I thank you for your commitment, your dedication, your loyalty, your service that both of you gave to this city for the years you sat on here and your years of public service prior to you being on this city. I will say that it's been my honor and privilege to serve with both of you. I want to thank you for the countless meetings that you've attended. Most times, people just see us on television here and think that's all that happens during the course of the week, but anybody that's sitting here, and to the new ones that will be joining us soon, we all know that that's not the case. The countless meetings, the citizen complaints that you have to deal with, the sacrifices not only you make, but your family makes because of the responsibilities and the duties that you have sitting at this table. So I thank, I thank your spouses, I thank your families for making those sacrifices along with you to give us your time and your talents at this table, and to make the city of Crest Hill a better place and to improve the quality of life that the city of Crest Hill has. So with that, we will begin the farewell and the transitions, and we will do this with respect, and we will do this with professionalism. And with that, I will, I am now going to go down to the podium, and we'll prepare to, to proceed with the farewells, and then the transition of swearing-in the new elected officials and the rest of the council. So I would ask at this time that Alderwoman Thuringer and Alderwoman Oberlin please join me at the podium. It's been our tradition here also for the last eight years that whenever we do resolutions, proclamations, the entire city council has a share in reading a portion of the resolution. But for this evening, we're going to deviate a little bit from that tradition, and I've asked Alderwoman Oberlin to join me at the podium, and she's going to read the top half of the resolution, and then I will read the bottom half of the resolution for, for Alderwoman Thuringer, so...
Resolution number 990, a resolution honoring Candace L. Thuringer, excuse me, for her service to the city of Crest Hill. Sorry. Whereas Candace L. Thuringer was elected to the position of Alderwoman Ward 3 for the city of Crest Hill on May 6th, 2013, and has been an active and diligent member of the Crest Hill City Council for the last four years, and whereas Candace L. Thuringer has served the city of Crest Hill as co-chairwoman of the Events Committee, which included the annual city picnic, the Liddice Memorial Ceremony, and the Holiday Lights Contest, along with about 3,000 other items that aren't on here, and has the Crest Hill liaison to cable television and played an integral role in improving the quality of our cable television broadcast, and whereas Candace L. Thuringer has served on many boards and organizations, represented the city of Crest Hill at several functions, and dedicated herself to 20 years of public service, serving the residents and the city of Crest Hill, and whereas Candace L. Thuringer has earned the gratitude of the citizens of Crest Hill for her dedicated efforts in improving their quality of life and making the city of Crest Hill a better place to live.
Now therefore, be it resolved by the Mayor and City Council of the city of Crest Hill as follows. Section 1, the Mayor and City Council offer their congratulations and profound expression of thanks to Candace L. Thuringer for her years of dedicated service to the city of Crest Hill. Section 2, the Mayor and City Council extend their best wishes to Candace L. Thuringer An honor working with you too.
Barb, thank you. Barb, I've known you for years, it's been an honor serving with you. Claudia, we go back to the Plan Commission, very long time. So, thank you. And here again, we didn't always agree, but at the end of the meeting, we walked out of here talking and the next meeting was better. Charlie, it's been my honor to know you and to work with you and to sit next to you these last four years. And I'm sure you're going to be very active in Carrollon Lakes and you're going to keep Tom on his toes. And you're going to keep Nate on his toes, I'm sure. Tom, it's been an honor working with you. I was honored the night I was sworn in to be able to work with you and, and work with Ward Four. Vicki, you're probably the best city clerk I've ever known and I really have enjoyed coming into City Hall and asking for things and knowing that they were going to get done. And Jan, Jan is just a gem. And I'm glad to know you, we've known each other for many years, our kids went to school together. So. Glenn, thank you. You have been an absolute gem to this city and your expertise and your knowledge will serve, will serve the city well the next four years. And Heather, I've seen you come in as like an intern under Dave Riddle and, and look where you are now. It's been an honor seeing you grow into this position and into the attorney and the city administrator that you are today. So, thank you, each and every one of you. And to the residents of Crest Hill, thank you for allowing me to serve you these past four years, it's been my honor.
And I will open it up now for anyone on council or city staff for any comments, but we'll begin with Alderwoman Oberlin at the podium first.
The mayor said I'm Chalk's Liver.
Chalk's Liver's going to speak now. Candy, I'm going to miss you very much as the person who kind of dragged you in this kicking and screaming four years ago. My little green Kia's going to miss you every week too. And it's going to be a different, a different thing without you here. You're not going to be here to be my sidekick on the Events Committee and I will miss you deeply. And I hope it was a privilege serving with you. And Marco's going to be in for some big trouble. Maybe you can forewarn him, but I wish you the very best in your life. I hope whatever it is you, you decide to go down, what road you choose, that it's very happy and that you have a wonderful life, okay?
Anybody else? We'll start with city council first, any comments?
I'll start, I guess. No one wants to go, I'll go. Well, Tina, like you said, we go way back. We, I started my first political career with you on the Plan Commission. And as the mayor said, we've not always agreed, we have many, many differences and only this council knows how many differences we have, but beside that, we all have one vision and one thing in common, we want the best thing for the city and we had one goal. Like you said, we walked out of here, you know, with no grudges. So I thank you for your service, for your dedication for many years, not just as elected official, you know, as all your careers before that. So I was honored to work with you. Thank you.
I just wanted to, go ahead.
You want to go far about?
All right. I just want to say it's been great to know you, great to have you up here. And, you know, you are right, when you say over the last four years, I mean, you know, in, in times past, it didn't work out that way. I mean, it was not a good thing, but it seemed like no matter what went on at the meetings and whether we agreed or whether we disagreed, next time, you're right, we did come back and always say, you know, hello and be cordial. But again, it's been great to know you and I'm sure I'll see you around somewhere along the line.
I'm not moving yet.
Nope, me either.
Candy, it was nice working with you. We had disagreements, but you have to have disagreements in order for it to work right. You just can't agree on everything. A disagreement's the best thing for the city. And whatever your endeavor is right now, I hope you and your husband have many, many years to complete what you do.
Candy, it was a real pleasure serving with you, it really was. You always brought a good perspective to allow the meetings, something that wasn't always what everyone thought was, you know, what they might have liked or not, but I do appreciate, you know, your point of view and it was really good to serve with you and really appreciate all you did for the city.
Thank you.
Candy, it's been a pleasure. You know I have great respect for you. You've had a lot of talks and a lot of good ones. And you're right, there are no goodbyes here. We'll be seeing you around. Thanks for all you've done.
Thank you.
Best wishes to you, Candy, in whatever you do, and a pleasure serving with you, sitting next to you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
If I may, I just want to say thank you very much for your service. And it went way beyond just being a councilwoman. You have so much volunteerism, so many things that you did outside of your duties here that I've been proud of as well. And I want to thank you for being a friend and, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And I'm going to go along with Glenn on that too, Candy. It hasn't just been the Alderwoman, it's been the Liddesque, it's been the picnic. God forbid you're not going to be there this year, but God help us all, actually. But it's Women's Civic League and it's everything that you have put into all of it. And as my Alderman, I thank you also for everything. I know that, you know, I have come to both you and Tina with the issues and they have been resolved and I appreciate that as a resident of the city. And also, the Clerk's Office will miss you, but you know you are welcome anytime to visit us.
Thank you.
So thank you for everything.
Candy, I just wanted to say I always appreciated your candor and your dedication to this city and I know that every decision you made came from the right place, so thank you as a staff member for bringing that to the table.
Thank you so much.
Anybody from city staff?
Candy, I know I came in at the tail end of your tenure here, but everything I've heard was all positive and it's been great to know you and you're a great citizen for the city of Crest Hill.
Thank you, Tony.
Candy, I've known you for close to twenty years, working with Joel. I know you always had a dedication to the city. You volunteer for more things than I can think of and you're always there trying to help out the city. And I think the city has benefited greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Candy, I just want to say thank you for supporting most of the things that we've wanted to try here in the Economic Development Department. I know a lot of things were different that came out of my end here, but I appreciate all your support and I thank you for always, your opinions and everything that you had to give to the city. So I wish you the best of luck and I thank you.
You're welcome.
While we struggled or had our bumps in the road in the Finance Department, you have always been there to provide a wealth of knowledge when needed and provided good advice on certain aspects that have come to city, city council. So I would just like to thank you for all of that and thank you for the years that you have spent here.
Thank you so much. I left the final goodbye or the final thank you at the end. And that is to thank my husband and my daughters for their continued support over the years. As I said the night I was sworn in, Joel thought when we got married thirty, almost thirty-two years ago, it was going to be a nice quiet life with a white picket fence and a couple of kids. And he found out very quickly that it wasn't going to be a nice quiet life, though we do have a picket fence somewhat and we do have the children, but that I truly wanted to serve the city and serve residents. And he's been a trooper going along with all the nights I haven't been home and the ribbon cuttings I've had to go to and the Saturday meetings that we might have or late meetings that we've had. So thank you, dear, for all your support over the years, I sincerely appreciate it.
And Tina?
Thank you again.
Forgot Tina.
And, well, I will think, Tina knows. If I start, I'm going to cry.
Fair enough.
So I will talk to Tina in private. I don't want to cry.
If anybody from the audience would like to make a comment, you're certainly welcome. I would now ask Alderman Convery and Alderman Enman to join me at the podium. We will begin with the reading of the resolution for Alderman Convery and I've asked his good friend Alderman Enman to read the top half of the resolution.
Where is the note? Forgive me if this gets a little difficult, okay? Resolution nine ninety-one, a resolution honoring Charles F. Convery for his service to the city of Crest Hill. Whereas Charles F. Convery was elected to the position of Alderman Ward Four for the city of Crest Hill on May second, 2005, and has been an active and diligent member of the city of Crest Hill City Council for the last twelve years. And whereas Charles F. Convery has served the city of Crest Hill as chairman of the Finance Committee, chairman of the Economic Development Committee, and member of the Veterans Police Memorial Committee. And whereas Charles F. Convery has served on many boards and organizations, represented the city of Crest Hill at several functions, and played an integral role in the redistricting of Aldermanic wards and hiring of the first city administrator. And whereas Charles F. Convery has earned the gratitude of the citizens, citizens of Crest Hill for his dedicated efforts in improving their quality of life and making the city of Crest Hill a better place to live.
Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Crest Hill as follows. Section one, the mayor and city council offer their congratulations and profound expression of thanks to Charles F. Convery for his years of dedicated service to the city of Crest Hill. Section two, the mayor and city council extend our best wishes to Charles F. Convery for a productive and joyous future and for his continued success in whatever endeavor he chooses. Section three, the Crest Hill City Clerk is directed to forward a certified copy of this resolution to Charles F. Convery and to make the original of this resolution available to members of the general public during normal business hours at the Crest Hill City Clerk's Office. Resolved this first day of May, 2017, Vicki L. Hackney, City Clerk, approved this first day of May, 2017, Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor. Motion would be in order? Motion would be in order, Tom?
I'm so.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Enman, seconded by Alderwoman Oberlin. Questions or comments of the motion? Roll call, please, Vicki.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Barbara Scolier?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Charlie Convery?
Abstain.
Tom Enman?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution number confirmed, nine nine one.
I would also like to present this plaque in recognition presented to Charles F. Convery, Alderman Ward Four, May second, 2005 to May first, 2017, for your outstanding service, hard work, and dedication from the city of Crest Hill.
I want to first offer my congratulations to Nate over here. Good campaign, Nate. I've had a good twelve years here, I have no regrets. Everything we have accomplished has been positive. What I want to do is thank some people. I want to thank the reelection committee who worked with me. We didn't succeed, but it wasn't because of the lack of effort. I want to thank the Ward Four residents. I've found, farmed a lot of good friends over the years and I'm going to miss them and I thank them. I want to thank the office staff. The office, Public Works, and the Police Department. They have been very helpful and responsive to me, which has helped me do my better job, on my job better. One last thank you. This to my wife, May. We will be married fifty-five years. Thank you, babe, I love you. Tonight's not about me and/or Candy, it's about Nate and Marco. And I wish both of you the best and much success in the coming four years.
Well, we will start with some goodbyes from the city council first, but we'll begin with Alderman Enman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say a few words about the working relationship that Charlie and myself shared. We worked together for eleven years. Charlie was an Alderman for twelve years and I had one year in the Plan Commission and now ten years as an Alderman. We are appointed by the mayor as the city's first Economic Development Committee, Committee of two. We were inexperienced, but we worked hard at the job. We sought out all the help we could get from those folks in Will County who had experience. We always joked about the fact if there was a meeting in Will County with more than five people, we were there. That's basically pretty close to true, it really is. We were trying to spread the word that we were in fact in the ballgame in economic development. Along with those meetings, the seminars, the conventions, the classes, were all enjoyable experiences. In addition, we worked well together on our Aldermanic responsibilities. We developed a close bond in our efforts to do the best job we could for Ward Four and the city of Crest Hill. I'm proud of the efforts we put forth and what we accomplished together. I'm honored to have worked with you.
The city council?
Charlie, I want to tell you what a privilege it's been to work with you. We've hit so much hard work, but we always had so much fun. We always had our host of inside jokes, we had our disagreements, but we always came back here and found a way to work it all out. We had the same genuine goal at heart the entire time and that was the best thing for the city and the citizens. And we had time for our fun, we would go out to dinner with your lovely wife, May, the municipal conventions. We have a lot of great memories there, I know, a lot of places we probably don't, aren't welcomed back yet, but nonetheless, we had a lot of fun and a lot of hard work and you were a treasure and I will miss this so much, but I will keep in touch with you, you know that I will, you're not going to get rid of me, not easily. But I hope that you and May have a very long, happy, new life doing whatever you decide to do next. And I hope you have all the joy in the world and never forget Bruce.
Well, Charlie, it's never easy to say goodbye. We, we all know here we had many differences. But besides the politics, my middle boy used to call you Grandpa Charlie. As you know, we have a family here, so that's, that touched my heart. My oldest son, when he was in middle grade, you were there for him. You were the only one sending him letters and encouragement and you were calling me every other day to make sure I was okay, because you know I was like crazy mom. You were there for my daughter's first birthday. You were there when my son went to mission trips, you helped him financially, I can never thank you enough for that. So as a family member, thank you. Thank you for everything.
Well, I just wanted to say it's been a, a pleasure to work with you, Charlie, over the last four years. And I truly wish the best for you and I'm sure you and May will have some, some next adventure coming up. I'm sure of it. It's been, it's been a pleasure.
Charlie, it's been a pleasure to work with you, it's been a pleasure to argue with you many times also. What we always did, we got the job done, that's all that mattered. And you and your wife have
wife have many years together as possible, and enjoy life.
Charlie, it's really been a great 12 years, what can I say? It's hard to believe 12 years ago, you know, started this journey together, you know, all of us on this council, you know, when you first got here, and it's been a real pleasure working with you, and sad to see you go, just like Candy, but you know, I guess time marches on, and I wish you luck in anything you do in the future, and much happiness. Thanks again.
Charlie, two words, class act, is what you are, and I've taken a lot of advice from you and followed it. Boy, I'll tell you, there's a lot of tears tonight, but you know what? There's a lot of happiness because you and May will get to spend time together too, more time, and our phone calls where both you and May are on the phone at the same time will continue because it's a lot easier than telling one and then having to tell the other. But those will continue, and we have lunch in a few weeks too, so, but thank you for everything.
Charlie, you've been a friend, you've been a mentor, you've been a big help to me in my life in many, many ways that you'll never understand, and thank you for your service to the city, thank you for sharing your wife with us, and I think we're just being, as Vicki said, a class act. Thank you, my friend.
Charlie, I quickly learned when I became a staff member at City Hall, if I needed an opinion, you were the one to go to, and you were never short of an opinion. So I appreciate all the guidance that you've given me over the last seven years working here, and even the few before then, but I will wish you and May both the best in your future.
Charlie, thank you very much for your insight, your support, and your help, not only to me, but to the Public Works Department, for being an advocate in supporting Public Works, and for being a great representative to the city of Crest Hill. God bless you.
Charlie, thank you for your support of our Police Department. Every time you've called me, we've had small problems, things that improve the quality of life for your ward and the citizens of Crest Hill, and we tried to do our best to meet that, and I do appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Charlie, you've been supportive of me from the very beginning, and I thank you for that. There's a few people, you know, that wouldn't have given me a chance, and I appreciate your candor and your opinions. You helped me plant my feet and get the wheels spinning here at City Hall, so I appreciate you trying to push the city forward. Thank you very much, and I wish you and May the very best of luck. Thank you.
Charlie, I will say from the first day that I existed, you have played a very big role in our Finance Department, and always in a positive way. You were there to support us in the times that we were trying to maintain a more professional office, and you were there to give advice when needed, and it was always great and very well appreciated, I guess you'd say. You know, alongside you was always May, and she was always right there with you, just telling us what needed to get done and what needed to be done, so I appreciate both of the time that you guys have spent here and all of the effort that you have both put forth through the city, and it was great, I appreciate it. Thank you again.
I now extend an invitation, anybody in the audience that would like to step to the podium, say anything.
I just want to say thank you to all of you for making Charlie's job so easy. He's admired most of you, and I know sometimes he didn't agree with you, nor did I, but I want to tell you that it has been a wonderful 12 years. You gave your best to him, and he tried to give his best to you. I want to thank the people at Crest Hill, the people who voted for him, even the people who didn't vote for him. Please, please get involved in your city government. We've lived here for 15 years, and I've come to many, many meetings, and I love to see this, I love to see all these people here. I wish that this happened every meeting, that people in Crest Hill would realize that you are the people that make the decisions for what goes on in this city, good or bad. So please pay attention, come out, and voice whether you dislike or like something that's being done, because nothing will ever change unless you make those decisions. And as that famous man Arnold Schwarzenegger said, "I'll be back."
Okay, with that, it's time to transition and to swear in the newly-elected officials. The order that we're going to do here tonight is going to be the swearing-in of the City Clerk first, and then the City Clerk will swear in the City Treasurer, and we'll begin with Aldermen One, Two, Three, Four, and the Mayor will be last. So I invite Vicki Hackney and Deputy City Clerk Jan Sardar to the podium.
Having been elected to the Office of City Clerk. In the city of Crest Hill. In the city of Crest Hill. In the county of Will. In the county of Will. State of Illinois. State of Illinois. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the state of Illinois. The Constitution of the state of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge. And that I will faithfully discharge. The duties of the Office of City Clerk. The duties of the Office of City Clerk. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Congratulations. I told my daughter and husband that they had to come up here to be with me. Hopefully I can do this without any more tears tonight, but good evening, Mayor, Council, family members, friends, and guests. Thank you to all the residents who supported me in my reelection as City Clerk, to my husband Dean and daughter Jennifer. Thank you for your ongoing support throughout the last four years, and your future support in the next four years. Although unopposed, I still felt it was important to go out and talk to residents on what we as a Clerk's Office have accomplished, and what we can help them with in better serving them in the future. I hope I have lived up to everyone's expectations as your City Clerk. As I stated four years ago, I was very blessed to have parents that taught me to stay true to myself, and I continue to carry that on in my adult life. I also quoted a very wise man, who I call a dear friend, who said, when I was running for City Clerk, "What are you going to do for me as our clerk?" At that time, I asked the question, I was asked the question, I hesitated and then thought, as a resident, what I would like to see accomplished. Well, in answer to that, Charlie Convery, I have many memorable accomplishments. I've created a welcome book for the new residents, continue to support Operation Care Package with the presentation in four years, a total of over 10,000 Christmas cards, thank you to help of Lori Thrasher, our office, six free shred days for the residents of Crest Hill, and continued commitment and success in working with other departments so residents are assisted and well-informed. One of my most memorable accomplishments was bringing before the alderwomen and aldermen the recommendation of elimination of city stickers. I wasn't sure what their reaction would be, but I was sure that this was a cost-effective decision that needed to be made. No matter what the outcome, I knew that it was my job to present the facts and figures as our office held this responsibility. I would like to sincerely thank the aldermen, alderwomen, for their support, as a resident's overwhelming appreciation is something we can all be proud of, and this was a cost-effective decision for the city. To the Council, I thank you. The Clerk's Office has also worked with the Treasurer's Office in streamlining work duties, and currently we are cross-training employees for the future employees of the city. Glenn Conklin and I have been a great team, and I'm thrilled we are continuing in the next four years so we can bring to Council our ideas for the future for these departments. Next, I cannot say enough about the Clerk's Office employees, Jan Sardar, Lori Thrasher, and Karen Basrom, who are all here tonight. Their combined years of service to the city is 76 years. Many people will say you are only good as a team that you have, and that I wholeheartedly agree. These ladies have and continue to put their heart and soul into the city. I'm so proud to say I am the City Clerk of Crest Hill, and their ongoing dedication and work ethic continues to make me prouder every day. I'm sure my initial micromanaging drove them crazy, but once I settled in, I realized with the years of knowledge these ladies had, our office was a book of knowledge that I never wanted to lose. Thank you to the three of you, as I've learned so much and continue to learn from you. We as a team will continue to support and help the residents, businesses, and city staff as we have shown. It takes time in implementing ideas, effort, continued professionalism, and sometimes just a hug to a resident or a concerned ear for them to talk to. Some changes have been tedious and at times frustrating, but in the end, we have maintained the work ethic, goals, and ongoing priorities that we implemented. To our two aldermen leaving us, it has been a pleasure serving with you, and I will treasure our friendship always. So in closing, thank you to everyone for your support, and I look forward to the next four years. And we are calling them first.
I, Glenn Conklin.
Having been elected to the Office.
Having been elected to the Office.
Of City Treasurer.
Of City Treasurer.
In the city of Crest Hill.
In the city of Crest Hill.
In the county of Will.
In the county of Will.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of City Treasurer.
The duties of the Office of City Treasurer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
You have many words. Next up, Scott Dyke. Thank you.
Glenn, that was a long speech.
That's the best speech you've heard on me.
The best speech I have. I state your name.
I, Scott Dyke.
Having been elected to the Office of Alderman.
Having been elected to the Office of Alderman.
Ward One.
Ward One.
In the city of Crest Hill.
In the city of Crest Hill.
In the county of Will.
In the county of Will.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Alderman.
The duties of the Office of Alderman.
Ward One.
Ward One.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. I won't be as long as Vicki or as short as Glenn, but I just want to say it's been a pleasure to serve the residents of Ward One the last four years, and the city of Crest Hill, and I'm looking forward to the next four years representing the citizens of Crest Hill, the residents of Ward One, and to move the city along in a forward position to better the city for everybody. So thank you.
We have one half, and we're out. Are you over that? Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Barbara Scoler.
Having been elected to the Office of Alderwoman.
Having been elected to the Office of Alderwoman.
Ward Two.
Ward Two.
In the city of Crest Hill.
In the city of Crest Hill.
In the county of Will.
In the county of Will.
And the state of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Alderwoman.
The duties of the Office of Alderwoman.
Ward Two.
Ward Two.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. First, I would just like to say thank you to the residents of Crest Hill for your support. I also ran unopposed, but I definitely appreciate the support. I appreciate the opportunity also to serve the residents of Crest Hill as Alderwoman for Ward Two. Second, to Claudia, I would just like to say thank you so much for the past four years. You've been such a great mentor. You were there for all the phone calls, all the questions, all the everything, and I so look forward to spending the next four years out there with you. I couldn't ask for anybody better to be with me in Ward Two than you. Thank you so much. And finally, thank you, Bill, wherever you are. You lost me already. Thank you to my husband, Bill, for always being there for me. You know, there's a lot of things that have come up in the last four years, different things, various places, and things we had to be at and do, and he's always been there for me, so thank you very much.
Marco Collet-Peeter. I state your name.
I, Marco Collet-Peeter.
Having been elected to the Office of Alderman.
Having been elected to the Office of Alderman.
Ward Three.
Ward Three.
In the city of Crest Hill.
In the city of Crest Hill.
In the county of Will.
In the county of Will.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Office of Alderman.
The duties of the Office of Alderman.
Ward Three.
Ward Three.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank Charlie and Candy for their service as alderpersons for the city. Congratulations to Vicki, Glenn, Mayor Solomon, and the rest of the aldermen that were reelected. I just want to say that I will, to the best of my ability, be the best public servant to the citizens of Ward Three and to the city of Crest Hill, and I don't come with any preconceived notions, no agenda, just to be the best alderman that I can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Marco.
Thank you, Marco.
Right. He's a Cubs fan.
These kids are great students, really great, like civic people.
And your nameplate will be in next week, so no one...
Have it spelled phonetically.
I have it totally under control.
Time to squeal.
I state your name.
I, Nate Albert.
Having been elected to the Office of Alderman...
Having been elected to the Office of Alderman.
Ward four...
Ward four.
In the City of Crest Hill...
The City of Crest Hill.
In the County of Will...
In the County of Will.
And the State of Illinois...
The State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Alderman...
The Office of Alderman.
Ward four...
Ward four.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Okay, I only got like a five-page... No, I do want to thank the Residents of Ward Four for selecting me. I appreciate Charlie and his lovely wife, May, more than most people would ever even imagine. They have been great people to me. Most of you know I lost my father about five weeks ago, and they were there. So, I will never forget that, and I really appreciate that. Thank you. I thank my lovely wife, Jill, my two kids. I will keep this brief because they do want cake. They've been promised. So, the only request that I have is that Mayor Solomon, you keep it somewhat brief, otherwise they're getting...
Good luck.
They're getting into the cake. It's a good thing it's not on this tape. But thank you. Thank you to my brother and his wife, who are here tonight, my nieces, they also want cake, and my lovely mother-in-law. My mom couldn't be here, she's by a pool somewhere in Florida enjoying a little time away.
And next is Mayor Ray Solomon, and actually, he has requested that Judge Jeff Allen present his alderman.
It's a privilege, it's a privilege and an honor to be asked by a good friend and a great public servant who administered the oath of office on its installation here. It's an extra-special privilege after listening and watching what's going on here in this body that governs the City of Crest Hill, and wish that all of our governing bodies on the state, national, and local level have the same level of confidence and goodwill to run for the best interests of their citizens. I'm happy to be here for you, sir. Are you ready to take the oath? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Raymond R. Solomon.
Having been elected to the office...
Having been elected to the office...
Of Mayor...
Of Mayor.
In the City of Crest Hill...
In the City of Crest Hill.
In the County of Will...
In the County of Will.
And the State of Illinois...
The State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Mayor...
The duties of the Office of Mayor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Your Honor.
Mayor, can we have a bathroom break?
I promise that I will be the longest-winded one up here.
We know that.
Any of the Albert children would like cake. Because I know there's lemon bars and those other goodies out there also. But first of all, let me thank Judge Jeff Allen. And Jeff is in the 12th Judicial Circuit, the Will County Judge in the Probate Court. He's been serving there for the past fifteen years as a Will County Judge. I will tell you that I have admired and respected Jeff for the past twenty years that I have known him. But I will also tell you that I value his friendship more, and that I value his morals and his integrity and his ethics that he has shown me for the past twenty years. And it certainly was an honor as a friend and a sitting judge to have you swear me in. So I thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule for being here with us.
My pleasure.
I will always be grateful for that. Before I get into my short-winded speech to the citizens, I just want to make some general comments. And, you know, elections are difficult, and they're getting more difficult. Elections sometimes cause divisions, but the people have spoken, and the people of City, the voters of City of Crest Hill have spoken loud and clear. So we will honor their voice, and it's time to move forward, and I look forward to working with all the members of the City Council, and I look forward to getting to know the two new aldermen that were recently elected by the citizens of Crest Hill. I am excited and confident that together as a group, we will achieve a great deal to improve the quality of life for all the residents and make the City of Crest Hill a better place to live. And we will do that as a unit. These next four years will be some exciting times in Crest Hill. We have a lot of good things coming to the City of Crest Hill. We also will be faced with some tough decisions over the next four years. But together, we will grow and we will progress. Change is difficult, and for the ones that have been sitting up there on the dais in front of where I sit, I have a saying from Cardinal Newman that is there for the last eight years, and I look at it every time I'm sitting there, and I'd like to share it with the residents at this time of what it says. It says, "To grow is to change; to grow much is to have changed often." And I think that needs to be the direction of this city for the next four years. I will tell you that being the mayor is a difficult job, the most difficult job I've had in my life. But I look forward to the challenges that will be facing us over the next four years. And some of those challenges I will speak about when I give my speech. But first, I want to recognize some people that are here this evening that are very important in my life. And the first one is my beautiful wife, Vicki, who in June, June 27th, we will be married thirty-five years. And I will tell you that she is my best friend. I will tell you that she is my rock in my life. She has the ability that when I get too far out there, she reels me in to bring me back to reality. She has the patience of a saint, especially in dealing with me for the last thirty-five years. I think any city official, past, present, future, that will ever sit at this dais will come to the realization real quick that you could not do this job, make the sacrifices that you make, give the commitment that you make without the support of your spouse or your significant other or your family members, because a lot of sacrifices are taken from every one of those family members for the time that we sit here and the time that we attend functions. I will tell you that my wife, over the past twenty-four years that I have been involved in city government here, has never complained about the meetings, but she has given me love and support every night I've come home, even after some tough meetings. I want you to know that she recently retired here June 30th, 2016, after giving thirty-seven years to special education at Joliet Central High School. And she was given a gift from God to be able to deal with those children that have special needs, and she retired as an administrator for the entire school. So I just want you to know how proud I am of you for all of the sacrifices you made for the school and for those children that did need your help. And I want you to know that I love you very much, and I look forward to growing old with you. I'm getting a lot grayer, so... Not you, no. But I just want to say thank you for the love and support you've shown me for the last thirty-five years. To our oldest daughter, Stephanie, and her husband, Guy. Stephanie is a kindergarten teacher at Chaney-Monsey School for five years. Actually, we're going to be going this Saturday for her master's graduation from Olivet Nazarene And she's got her master's degree in the reading specialist, so she has a lot of, a bright future ahead of her. And to her husband, Guy, who works at Asparian Healthcare in Wilmington as a nurse, I guess they cover both gamuts. She covers the small little children in kindergarten, the five-year-olds, and he takes care of the elderly that are in need of his assistance for healthcare. So I want both of you to know how proud I am of both of you. Guy also was my webmaster for the campaign and put together the website. So I thank both of you, and both of you have a bright future ahead of you, and I pray that God blesses you with good health, healthy children, and a long lifetime like your mother and I have enjoyed for the past thirty-five years. To our youngest daughter, Emily, and her husband, John. And Emily is a fifth-grade teacher at All Saints Academy in Naperville, and she has also been, along with Stephanie and my wife, they all have been given a gift for being able to mentor and to train young children as they mature, something that I probably could not have the patience to do. But they have been, both have been given a gift from God also to mentor those children. And to her husband, John Morris, they're still newlyweds, I guess, almost, still under a year. He works in the IT department at Lewis University, and together, they have a bright future ahead of them also. John has his master's degree from Lewis University also. So I want you to know how proud I am of both of you for what you do, what you do for me, what you do for our family, and you also. I pray to God that he grants you a healthy life, healthy children, and a long life like your mother and I have enjoyed for the last thirty-five years. I also hope that my wife and my children are proud of me, and I hope they are proud of me as a husband, and I hope they're proud of me as a father. And lastly, I hope that they're proud of me as a mayor also. But I hope they're more proud of me as a husband and a father than mayor. And if I have that, life is good. Life is real good. I also want to thank my secretary and the city administrator, Heather McGuire Secretary, Maribel DeHarrell, who's at home tonight. Maribel's been with me for the past eight years, and I will tell you that I would be lost without Maribel, that Maribel keeps me in line also here at City Hall. She kind of keeps me on my toes where I'm supposed to be. She knows where to find things and do things that I wouldn't even know where to begin to look. So if you're watching tonight, Maribel on TV, I want to thank you for your dedication, your commitment, your loyalty to the City of Crest Hill and to myself and to the city administrators for the past eight years that you have served as administrative assistant in the City of Crest Hill. I have with me also this evening...
You should have given him water. Now we got another fifteen minutes.
I have with me this evening one of my two brothers, my oldest brother, Rick, and his wife, Mark. And I will just say that Rick is the patriarch of our family, and I will leave it at that. Mark is retired from teaching also for many years, and Rick dabbles in teaching at Joliet Junior College and selling real estate. But I want you to know how proud I am of both of you also for your love and support that you have given me. Life has not always been easy in our family, but I thank you, and I love you, and I am proud of all of your accomplishments. Unfortunately, our middle brother, Russ, is in the hospital. He's actually in intensive care, and we were up there yesterday all day. And I will tell you that he's struggling, so if you pray, I would ask that you do pray for him and keep him in your prayers, because he's got some major tough surgeries ahead of him that we don't know what the outcome is going to be. But we are a strong family that sticks together, and we are a strong family that has a lot of faith. So we're putting our faith in Jesus and God to get us through this cross that we have to bear right now. So he'll probably be watching this on the web in the next couple days. So to our brother, Russ, and to his wife, Debbie, and his three children, we want to let him know that we love him very much, that we're praying for him, that we want him to keep fighting to get through this so we can go back to enjoying all the good times that we've had for the last many years. And he is a fighter. We seen it yesterday. We were all up there yesterday, and we seen it yesterday how he fights. So I ask that you please keep him in your prayers. Here is my cousin, Joanne, who lives in Crest Hill, and she's not by age the matriarch of the family, but she's always been there for our family, for the Lustig family, my mother's side of the family, and she is not only a cousin to me, but she's a good friend that we can reach out and we can talk to, and it means a lot for you to be here tonight for me. I want to tell you I love you very much, and thank you for what you do for the family and for the relationship that we have also. I think it's important that I share this story with everybody, especially this time as our brother is going through some tough times, and I've said this for the last two swearing-ins, but unfortunately, my parents... And I've said this for the last two swearing-ins, but unfortunately, my parents died very young, and I was very young. And my mother died when she was forty-seven years old, and I was eleven. And then my father died when he was fifty-four, and I was seventeen. But the story I want to share with you is that when my mother died from cancer at forty-seven, and I was eleven, I will tell you I was confused, and I was struggling, and I was mad, and I was mad at the world, and I was mad at God, and I was mad at everybody. And I kind of moped in my room for a long time. And my father was a man of a few words. But he came into the room one day, and it's funny, the things that you'll never, ever forget in your life. And he said to me that, you know, you could sit in this room and mope for the rest of your life, or you can go out in the world, and you can make something of yourself. And he said, no matter what decision you make, he said, the world's not stopping because you're going to sit in this room. He said, the world's going to go on with or without you, and the sun will come up in the east, and it's going to go down in the west every night. So he said, the choice is yours, and he walked out of the room. And at eleven years old, I could tell you, I was probably more confused and didn't know what to do. But I never did forget that. So we had our crosses to bear when we were very young, because all three of the sons were pretty young. But I'll tell you, I'm very proud of the fact that we have stayed a close family. We have stayed a very close family. We cover each other's backs. We're there when we're needed, and we have fun when that time is there also. And I sat here for the last two previous swearing-ins, and I told you that I hope that our parents are proud of the three of us. Well, I'm going to sit here in front of you tonight, and I'm going to tell you that I know that our parents are proud of all three of us, and what we turned out to be, and what we made of ourselves. So I know they're watching tonight, and I know they're praying for us, and everything will be all right. I'm convinced of that. So I think it's important that we keep all these things in tow. And when I said that I hope our children are proud of me as a father and my wife as a mother, that's the legacy that I want to leave my children. And I want them to pass that legacy on to their children and their family, to stick together in time of need and in time of happiness. And if you do that, girls, gentlemen, you will have a great life, because I have, I know Rick has, and I know Uncle Russ has. I want to, before I give my speech, that's going to last about twenty-five minutes, I want to, I want to tell you one thing, that I do pray. I do pray. And when I pray, I pray for a lot of things, but I'm going to share one thing with everybody tonight, that when I pray, I pray for the courage, the strength, and the wisdom to make the right choices for the city of Crest Hill, and to do what is right for this great city. And it's worked, especially for the last eight years as mayor, because that is a difficult job. So I will continue to pray, and I will continue to ask for the courage, the strength, and the wisdom to be a good mayor, to make the right choices. And I know that not everybody will agree with me, and I know there will be times when they agree and times that they don't. But if we all do what we think is in the best interest of this city, that is the right choice. And at the end of the day, the majority will rule, and life will move on. So with that, I would like to share a short speech with the residents of the city of Crest Ladies and gentlemen, it has been my honor and privilege to serve as your mayor for the past eight years, and I am humbled and proud to be re-elected as your mayor of your city. I thank you from the bottom of my heart for giving me this opportunity. And I would like to thank Mayor Knapp, Mayor Berta, Mayor Boreo, Mayor Randich, and Mayor Chernovich, who preceded me, for their years of service, commitment, dedication, and loyalty to the citizens of this fine city. To past Mayor Randich and past Mayor Chernovich, you have both built many relationships at City Hall over the years, and you are always welcome in this building as long as I am the mayor. Now that the election is over, it is time to move forward with improvement, with growth, and with progress. It is a new day in the city of Crest Hill. The city will continue to face many challenges. I am proud of the many accomplishments that have been realized during the last eight years. Even though much has been accomplished, I personally am not satisfied, as there is much more work to be completed. This city, as our country, has faced some tough economic times. I am proud of the fact that our city budget has been balanced with a surplus over the past eight years. I will continue to work with city staff and city council to produce a budget that is fiscally responsible and balanced. We will continue to promote our city in a positive manner, and to make improvements in the best interest of our city's financial prosperity. The non-home rule sales tax referendum, which was successfully passed on March twentieth, two thousand twelve, has improved the quality of life for all of our residents. Our visitors have assisted us in funding many of the needed projects in our city. This steady source of revenue will continue to support us in hiring, in the hiring of additional police officers to improve public safety. Current recommendations say that our police department should be staffed with thirty-one police officers. The hiring of the thirty-first officer has been budgeted and approved into the seventeen and eighteen fiscal year. Public safety has and always will be one of the top priorities for this administration. Over the past year, eight years, we have addressed the issue of an aging infrastructure and flooding that has been a problem for many years by completing some much-needed storm sewer water projects, water main projects, and sanitary sewer projects. We have alleviated much of the flooding throughout the city during heavy rain starts. However, I am not satisfied. It is my goal and intention to do everything possible to help alleviate flooding for all of our residents. Some long-needed road improvements will continue to be addressed in accordance with our five-year street plan. Another benefit of the sales tax referendum is every homeowner and business owner will continue to receive a property tax rebate check of twenty-five percent of the city portion of their property tax bill. It is my hope and intention that in these tough economic times, this rebate check will be of assistance to you and your family. I am proud of the fact that the promises made in regards to the non-home rule sales tax referendum have been kept and will continue over the next four years. The past city council and this city council should also be proud of the fact that we have collectively kept the promises that were made. Looking into the future, the city will need to address several issues. The West Sewerage Treatment Plan that was built in nineteen sixty-eight is in dire need of upgrades and rehabilitation. We will address the issue of a phased-in project over the next ten to fifteen years, which will be fiscally responsible to all of our residents. The city also will have to make some tough decisions in regards to the aging structure of this building that we sit in right now, and the fact that we are physically reaching building capacity level. My goal is to arrive at a solution that is functional, operational, and fiscally responsible for many years to come. The city of Crest Hill employs a very dedicated workforce. Some of these individuals have given their time and talent to this city for many years. I will put my trust and confidence in a city administrator and in our department heads that I feel are the most qualified, honest, and trustworthy to handle the day-to-day operations of this city. I am extending an olive branch to each and every member of the city council. As in the past eight years, the doors of communication will always remain open. This will not be my administration. This will not be your administration. This will be our administration. We will be judged over the next four years on what we do collectively, not individually. My goal is to unify the city council and to bring harmony to this group. Healthy differences of opinion are welcome if they are handled respectfully and professionally. The manner in which this city council acts as a group at this table will have a direct impact on how our developers, our contractors, and our citizens view this city. I have the utmost confidence in this city council that we can accomplish all of our goals if we work together as a unified group. As a result, growth and progress will come to the city of Crest Hill. Economic development always has been and always will be a priority for the city. It is my intention to actively pursue new businesses and to support existing businesses throughout the city. I am confident that the next four years will be very successful and beneficial to the city of Crest Hill. It is my intention to continue to improve the quality of life for all our residents by adding new businesses and services. As in the past twenty-four years, I promise to work hard and to do what is in the best interest of this city. Honesty and openness will prevail and will be a mainstay. I will work hard to keep the trust and confidence of those who voted for me, and I will work hard to earn the respect of those who did not. I look forward to the many challenges that will be presented over the next four years, and I am confident that together, we will make the city of Crest Hill a place proud of honoring the traditions of our past while fulfilling the dreams of our bright and promising future. I am so proud to be your mayor of your city. I want to thank city council and everyone that is here tonight, and may God bless each and every one of you. Thank you. Okay. We just have a couple of things to take care of, and then there is still plenty of cake out there. Bless the elder children ate it.
Sounds like they got it in.
All right. So moving on.
They sound happy.
Committee and liaison reports, anybody? I have one. Memorial Day is going to be upon us soon here. It's going to be on May twenty-ninth, Monday, May twenty-ninth. Our twenty-eighth, or twenty-ninth annual Memorial Day program will be held at 2:00 PM. Our guest speaker this year is Dan Sizek. He's a Crest Hill resident. He is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, a Vietnam veteran who served from nineteen sixty-two to nineteen sixty-eight. Our music for the afternoon will be from the Frankfurt Brass Band, who will do a twenty-minute prelude before the ceremony, and then several songs during the ceremony. Also, we'll have Annemae Lucansik, Crest Hill resident, will be with us for her twenty-ninth year, also singing several songs. We will, it'll be a very respectful program to honor our veterans, both living and deceased, and will also honor those, our police officers, both living and deceased also. So I ask that you please join us on Monday, May twenty-ninth at 2:00 PM. It'll be right outside at the Veterans Garden. There will be refreshments after the ceremony. Moving on, city council comments. These are positive city council comments, anything you'd like to share with your constituents? I will begin with our two new aldermen this evening. We will begin with Ward Three with Marco Cola di Pietro. Pretty good, huh? Got that right.
Close.
Cola di Pietro, okay. Give me a little more time, I'll get it right. Cola di Pietro, got it.
I just want to say that I'm very excited to be able to work with council and city staff and to make the city a better place. I'd also just like to thank Chief Clark. When I came in to meet with staff on Wednesday, he informed me that we had two officers that helped in the search of the little baby that went missing. So I just wanted to thank him for having the city represented in that search.
Thank you. Alderman Albert.
A little bit easier to say, huh?
Yeah, it's a lot easier.
No, again, I wanted to thank everybody, and congratulations, everybody that got re-elected. But again, thank you to Candy for her years of service to the city, and thank you to Charlie for your years of service to the city. And also, congratulations to May on being Woman of the Year from St. Anne's Church. That's a proud accomplishment.
Alderman Emmett.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to repeat what's already been said. Nate has taken my fire already, and this is his first seat up. I want to congratulate those that were elected, and again, thank you very much to those that are leaving tonight, Candy and Charlie. Having you up here was a great honor and a great pleasure, and we really did appreciate your service. And thank you, Charlie. And that's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Alderwoman Oberlin.
Well, I also want to, once again, say adieu to Charlie, because it's not really goodbye. And Candy, I don't know if she's still here? She left. Oh, well, there you go. She's already gone. And I want to welcome our new people, especially Marco. I really look forward to working with him. I'm just going to call you Marco, though, okay? No last name. I'm going to say, make it simple. I do look forward to working with him. He lives exactly the same distance from me that Candy did in another direction, so it's going to be pretty easy for me. But I do welcome him. He's a very nice person. I've known his wife for years, and I think he's going to do a great job.
Our two other women, Giselle.
Well, I want to also thank Charlie Converdy and Candy for their years of services. We'll miss you very much. And for all the new elected and re-elected, congratulations. And just keep in mind, no matter what decision you make, remember that you were elected, the people elected you, and I hope you make the right decision for the city.
Alderwoman, Elderwoman Sclaire.
Well, I just want to say congratulations to both Nate and Marco, and also best of luck again to both Charlie and to Candy, and to everyone that was re-elected.
Ward One, Alderman Verchay.
Well, I'd say thank you to everyone that was sworn in this evening, the new council. I'd like to say thank you to Charlie and to Candy for services they conducted to the city while in office.
Alderman Dyke.
There's nothing more I can add to what's been said, except let's go eat cake.
All right, public comment, if anybody would like to address council, you need to come to the podium, you need to state your name for the record, your address is optional. Your address is optional. Seeing none, to our city administrator, Heather, is there a need for an executive session?
No.
No?
No, there's not.
And before they make it second it, because I didn't hear that, I'm going to give the new sitting alderman the first oppor, because this is going to be your only opportunity to ever make a motion and second on the adjournment, because it's always usually Ward One. So I, if they will pass tonight, we're going to let...
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
All right, we have a motion by Alderman Albert. We have a second by Alderman Cola di Pietro for an adjournment. Questions or comments? Roll call, please, Vicki.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin. Marco Cola di Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are refreshments in the hallway. This meeting is adjourned at 8:51 PM. Thank you and good evening.